Yes.
I don't know, Andy's reading something really important, obviously, because he's really.
Hey guys.
He doesn't have his headset on tonight, though.
I don't.
All right.
You've got an upgrade.
All right.
Okay, he's made it. Look at James.
Oh.
I know. He has long sleeves on in a 90-degree weather. He's gonna be roasting pretty soon.
No, no, they're short.
Are you, you have Si James? Can I join you?
Yeah, come on over. You can social distance.
I might do it later after. There you go. All right, well, let's start this thing so we could go, you guys can get together here.
Get any liquid.
Jamie, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right, cool. Let's call tonight's meeting to order Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 already, at 7:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Alderman Levy.
Here.
Slavin. Ballberg.
Here.
Fiore.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Hospodarsky.
Here.
Very good.
Check the waiting room one more time, just to make sure Slavin's not sitting there.
There's, there's no one here.
All right.
Which is very odd for Brad.
Yeah. All right, so we have minutes to be approved from May 19th, 2020. Get a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Thank you, James and Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Appointments next week. We will have two appointments coming from the library board. But in the meantime, let's go to approval of the warrant list dated 6/2/2020. Any questions or Scott, anything on there that, or Jamie, we should be aware of that stands out?
Uh-uh.
No?
They're small.
I've got a question.
Who said that? Sorry.
You already got it.
What you got?
Um, a sprinkler system at 57 Elm?
That was a repair due to the curb work and the reconstructive work we had done on the roads.
Okay, so that didn't come out of our pocket, did it, or? How does that work?
How does that? Well, we have to repair what we break during our construction, so.
Do we give it to the construction company to reimburse us, or do we eat that?
I believe Jack is handling that. I can follow up on that and update you at a, at a later date. Now, um, we still have to pay our vendor.
I understand. That's fine. I just figured it'd be reimbursable.
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, just let us know.
Will do.
Thank you, Jamie.
You bet.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, let's get a motion to approve that warrant list. If I get a motion for that, please. I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Whoa.
Okay. I think it was Hospodarsky, just non-delay ahead of you. Jamie, how do you roll call, please?
Okay, Alderman Levy.
Aye.
Ballberg.
Yes.
Fiore.
Hi.
Peterson.
Aye.
Hospodarsky.
Aye.
Very good.
Beautiful. Oh, I gotta go to my, I gotta switch pages here, so I can look at the agenda, too. Uh, Jim, was there anything for public input this evening?
There was not. There was not this time around. I checked my email a bunch of times, and no. No, not at this time.
All right, nothing for the mayor's report in these very tumultuous times. Committee reports, treasurer's report, clerk report, we'll jump right down to, I guess, new business. What we have first is consideration of motion approving the fiscal year 2021 budget. Should be interesting. All right. Scott, how are you predicting this one? If you know how to do it, tell every other city in the state of Illinois.
Yeah, randomly throwing darts at the board, but I think this is our best guess and best option. Our strategy for this was to predict a fairly sizable drop in revenue, which I think everyone is correct. It's just the extent of that. Associated with that, we've cut essentially every discretionary expense, except for the Everts Park project. The reason why we kept that one in and are prioritizing that is the $400,000 grant we received from the state of Illinois. If we don't go through with it, that funding may not come through. So rather than giving up $400,000 and 40% of that project, we want to try to see that through this year. Hopefully, some of that project, we do anticipate some of that projects will come in next fiscal year's budget also, so that could open up some possibilities for us. And there are a few other things that we can think of as the year goes on. If things continue to perform poorly, we'll look at additional options. But I think this is a pretty good guess, and it does keep some pretty good progress and some momentum on some of our priorities from the years past.
All right, good. And then, I guess, where do we stand with that refinancing? I know that was August or September. What, when was that, and how's that looking nowadays?
Our bonds are callable starting, for the first time, starting in August and September. And one of very few good things that's happened with all of this is interest rates are down again. So as we look to refinance the bonds, our original $260,000 prediction looks more like $300,000. One option that I've gone over with the bond consultation professionals is if we decide to try to take some of that money upfront. So for this year and next year, if this is when we really need it, how will that impact the $300,000 savings number that we're looking at? And will we try to decide to take some of that money in this year and next year? Or should we try to save the full $300,000 over the remaining life of the bond? So we're going over a couple of different options that we're gonna review with the council. I prefer if we can wait until that could be in person. So hopefully, if this opens up enough in July, we'll have them available to answer questions and go over different options.
Great. Any questions? Do you want to have a chance to review that budget? Andy, anything from you? I know you like to find night numbers.
Sorry, is that me here? Nope, nothing. I did review it, though. Thank you. Well, you know, I guess, I mean, one thing I was gonna bring up later that I guess connects to this. In light of everything going on, you know, I guess this is a question for you, Scott. Do you see, you foresee any recommendations over the coming days or weeks aimed at? Uh, you know, I'm thinking of things like training, educational resources specifically for the police department, right? So we're thinking about any sort of resources for them, be it, you know, formal training or otherwise, that could help to remove or reduce bias, that could help to, you know, remove or reduce the use of force or excessive force. If we have a pretty marginal amount, I don't have it right in front of me, invested for police department training. What's the prudence in your mind? What's the anticipation, if any, of making that sort of recommendation?
Sure. One thing that we did plan on doing this year before our expected revenues took a hit was we had a spot for police staff and command training within the budgets. We have canceled that, anticipating and putting that off until we know what our revenue picture is going to look like. But the full amount of money is still within the budgets. So it gives us flexibility to reduce that amount if we need to. But also, we could divert that money from within this current budget to go through some of those additional types of trainings if necessary. There are simulator trainings, verbal judo-type trainings, anti-bias-type trainings. There's a lot out there. But when you have something like this happen also, is a lot of times, many of those resources become available. Sometimes the state will mandate and supply some money for that training, or different types of agencies will conduct more of that training to allow more of our officers to do that. So I do expect we'll continue to focus on that. And training has been one of our largest focuses. We've, we've stayed compliant on everything we've needed to with all of our officers. But as additional improvements come out, we definitely want to take advantage of those, especially if there's anything new or best practice, new best practices change, is the national picture changes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want, want my suggestion to be misinterpreted. Listen, I think we've got an admirable police department, right? From the top down, all of my observations have only been positive. The reports that I've seen have been, you know, by and large, positive. And I'm not suggesting that we're not compliant with whatever, you know, requirements exist, be it through our contract or legal requirements or otherwise. I certainly would think that this is one of the areas that we would want to be proactive versus reactive in, right? If, if we can invest just a little bit in an effort to, you know, ensure that we've, we've made a reasonable and responsible effort to remove and reduce bias from our police department, to remove or reduce the use of excessive force. And, and I don't pretend to have all the answers of what that would be. I mean, I've seen all sorts of interesting things the last few days with really forward-thinking police departments that use data in interesting ways, you know, body cams, those sort of things are obvious and talked about all the time. But I think there's some less than obvious and some obvious things that we can do proactively and not wait around for the state. I certainly don't think it's prudent to wait around for the state and cross our fingers and hope. I'd much prefer that we, we'd invest money now proactively. And if the state ultimately comes around and, and, you know, has some wisdom on this, then great. We can certainly take advantage of those resources as well. Again, I think this is the sort of thing that you, you know, take advantage of, you know, whatever flexibility that we can within the budget and move a little bit of money around.
Is everyone sort of on the same page as Andy on that? Because we can have the chief report back in a couple of weeks if he sees anything out there, Andy, or, you know, report, or Scott, if you can report back in a couple of weeks, just sort of what's out there? Because I'm, to Andy's point, I think that's gonna be a big education point going forward for police.
It's a good point. We can definitely have Chief Wentz come to an upcoming meeting. I think it is really helpful, just in this time, to be able to just at least even talk and answer questions on these types of things. As it relates to the budgets, if there are anything, if there is anything that we can do during the year, I can say that is gonna be our number one priority. We do have, there's some various funds where I think we can take small amounts of money out of. Or if we go to page 32 of the agenda, I think that's the most important picture, is we look at across the three years, we're expected to have reasonable reserves across those three years. So if something like body cameras do become the correct move at any point along the way, we wouldn't let money be the hindrance to that. We'd make other cuts or other decisions other than.
What are body cams? Are they expensive?
We've had body cameras in the budgets in the second year of each budget for $55,000. That was based off of us reviewing that option about three years ago. I've discussed, you know, general concepts with the chief about that. The, there are some good and bad things with that. The technology's really not the best yet. And if you look at some of the body cameras and some of the ones that you might see on TV, you might see one good one out of every, you know, 10 officers or so, just depending on the way that they've been placed on them. But we're reviewing that along with the chief's association and our neighboring units as well, so we can try to do that in a, in a, in a very focused and, and making sure that we follow all best practices.
Scott, for, for the body cams, the camera itself's really not the expensive part. It's, it's the data storage that becomes a problem, right?
Correct. And the state has given some guidance on some things like that. You know, there's, some communities are concerned about jumping in with things that are not provided in terms of policies at the state level. So what are we going to be liable for or not liable for in a difficult situation? This door, data storage is one of the knowns. It was actually the 2015 law I discussed with Alderman Peterson a few days ago, provided that communities have to keep that, those records for 90 days, which is a lot of data. So there is some storage or cloud storage cost to that. But the $55,000 that we had in the budget previously considered all those costs.
Thank you.
Is that something we want to reinvent, relook at, or hold off for a little bit and see what technology comes around, or?
It doesn't hurt if the council wants to put that money in the police budget for this year. It would reduce our ending fund balance from $1,171,000 to just over 1.1 million. It's certainly not gonna affect our credit rating or anything else. It's not gonna significantly deviate from our existing financial policy of trying to keep 90 days on reserve. That's something we could certainly do if we're interested.
Maybe what we can do is kind of going back to the beginning of the conversation. Have you, Scott, meet with the chief and come up with some thoughts or recommendations that you can bring back to us? And we can discuss.
Absolutely.
I don't, I mean, I'm sure President, or President, Chief Wentz is, is up to snuff on, on, you know, the state of the art here much more than, than I am. But I know that following the, everything that happened in Ferguson several years ago, that President Obama commissioned a task force, they produced a report, they still continue to produce resources. So you need not look much further than the Obama Foundation or wherever he disseminates information. And, you know, there's a, I imagine, a wealth of resources to look over. Whether or not body cams are the right fit for us, or they're sensible at this point in time, or at any point in time, I don't know. It's worth considering for sure. I think it's sensible to budget for, and then consider over the coming weeks and months whether or not body cams are right. But I, I think doing nothing and waiting is not right.
I, I have, I just, one, one, I'll quickly add. I know it sounds crazy, but if anything, if we could do this. I am a big fan of Camden, New Jersey, and what they've done with their policing. They've had a massive reduction in many issues. And that was a hard-hit community for a long time, was one of the worst communities in the country until this chief took over. If, hey, I wouldn't mind sending Chief Wentz out there to do a study under him for a little bit. But, I mean, just to take a look at some of how other police looked at how they had handled their communities. And I, I think we kind of leaned ourselves towards that way anyway with the community policing that we do. I'm much more into community policing and getting our constituents to understand and know who our policemen are more than the body cams. So I'd rather spend more money on, on getting our community to know who our policemen are and vice versa than spending money on something that people seem to turn off all the time anyway, right before it all happens. Every time, for some reason.
Whoops. Yeah, not good. All right, so why do we? I like that idea, too. Scott, you want to just do a little investigation as to training? See where the body cam technology, what's that gonna pull up, and then see what Camden can offer us as well?
Absolutely. We'll do all of those items. I would recommend, just with this conversation, that when we make the motion to approve the budget, that it's with the addition of $55,000 to the police department for body cameras. And then we can always decide to not approve those through the course of the year. It's their $55,000. That'll be an item that'll come back to the council no matter what.
All right, good.
Just because it's in the budget doesn't give them the authority to unilaterally spend it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All good by everybody. On that topic, anything else? Eric, you have your hand, uh, what the?
I guess the, one other thing that I'd like to, you know, each year we talk about different funds, and we've spent a lot of time talking about the water fund. But I think it's going to be a year where we really focus on our TIF fund. With our TIF fund being more certain than our other funds and stronger than our water fund, that'll be an area where we will be able to review property acquisition. And we still have, I believe, two TIF facade grants budgeted for this year. So we will still be able to have some improvements within the downtown, even as there's some economic uncertainty.
Has there been any movement or developments on the, on the TIF?
Yes, there was a three-day and three-day-only special legislative session that occurred in Springfield about two weeks ago. It was supposed to be limited to certain items, but there were other TIF extensions that were passed, and ours were not. I have been in touch with Senator Morrison and Representative Morgan on the subject. Also with Attorney Farillo on just different options that we might have. We'll be able to update the council on that probably in about a month or so.
All right, thanks, Scott.
I don't even know what to say after that one. All right.
I have a couple of things.
Yeah, I'm not getting things, too. If this wasn't recorded.
Right.
All right. Any other questions on the budget or any comments, concerns that you want answered about the budget or spending or revenues or expenses, anything like that?
Oh, just real quick. I know when I was looking through the budget, it talked about allocating funds for the City Hall at the library. Is that actually in there, since that kind of, we took a left turn on that?
I, I removed the preliminary engineering, I'm sorry, preliminary architecture work on that, just because I think we're gonna have to go more back to the drawing board. And I think we will have to have discussions as to whether that should come out of the general fund or the TIF fund or where that comes. But I don't expect that to be immediate.
Perfect. And that's it for me.
All right. Jim, Andy, Michael, anything? Eric?
No, it was a well-thought-out budget.
I do expect that this year more than most, and we talk about the budget on a regular basis. But I do think we're going to be reviewing both revenues and expenditures. I'm going to be doing it on a weekly basis and likely updating the council on my manager's reports. But I also expect to talk about it more frequently at the committee of the whole and city council meetings, whether that be, A, we somehow got it right, or revenues are down more than we expect, so this is how we're going to manage that. Or, you know, hopefully, the third version of things are a little better than we expected. Here's what we plan to do both this year and next summer. So we'll, we'll be talking about it more than usual.
And we'll find out what our sales tax number is in the next couple of days. Was it for April?
Yep, the April sales tax, which we expect to be our toughest month. I think that'll tell us really what our floor is in terms of sales tax projections for the year.
So that's where that goes. All right, there's no further questions. I get, we need a motion to approve that. Sorry, I lost my agenda.
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll say.
Do you want to add $55,000 to that, though?
Yes, I'm sorry. Most, motion to approve the budget with an addition of $55,000. To where were we adding it exactly?
I don't know if there's a line name. It's to the police department for potential body cams. Is that what we're looking at, or education?
To the police department, three-year capital expense plan.
Police department, three-year capital expense plan.
I'll second that. Advice motion.
All right, I think we need to, one, two, three, four. Do we need a supermajority for this, or a straight? We lost Mike, it looks like. So Jamie, keep your eyes open for him.
Yeah, uh, nobody, no. What happened to him?
He looked like he was frozen. He was in deep in thought for quite some time.
We know there was a computer glitch, because that's not Mike.
Frozen.
Waiting, but I'll keep a, I'll keep an eye out.
You, you, this is just a regular roll call, Charlie, just a simple majority.
Okay, good. All right, Jamie, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Levy.
Aye.
Ballberg.
Yes.
Fiore. Peterson.
Aye.
Hospodarsky.
Aye.
Do you have Mayor Pacaro today?
I don't know. I think we're good, right?
That's four. That's four. We're good.
Okay.
All right, all right. Nice job, Scott. Let's see where it takes us, though, huh?
I was center of pocket.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, exactly. All right, moving on to 12/2, consideration of settlement agreement between North Shore Gas Company and the City of Highwood, pertaining to municipality, municipal utility tax collection. All right, Scott, what we got going on?
Okay, this is, uh, this is Azavar Audson Solutions. Yeah, can you hear me? The key time giving. As you recall, we contracted with them in November 2018 with 10 other municipalities to look for missing revenues throughout the city's budget. Was there the utility?
I don't understand a word he said.
Yeah, Scott, can you give a summary, or do you know?
And they kept at it. And what you have for you is.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah, Chris, you're breaking up a lot.
Chris, he sounds like Charlie Brown.
Jamie, you might, you might have to mute him, because all we hear is "brrr."
Yeah. This is, this video.
I just sent him a message.
Okay. Can you give us a summary?
Yes, quick summary. Azavar, this was the auditing company that we contracted with, and they got a portion of the found money when they audited the amounts of money that we're supposed to get from the utilities.
Can you hear me now?
Maybe good for Scott to finish the update, because you're found, Chris.
They were able to find a approximately $3,500 payment, which also equates to $756 per year just from improper ways that North Shore calculated the gross receipts. So the agreement on this is with North Shore Gasoline, but we owe the, us, their percentage back to Azavar for this. In approving the agreements, we would get $3,449 after the payments of them and $756 per year moving forward.
Can you hear me now?
It's still very muddy, Chris. Still very muddy.
Ah, crud.
Good luck. We're good.
Pretty sweet, though.
It's your internet connection, not the headset.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Bandwidth.
All right, so I think we have a pretty good understanding, so it sounds to our favor for a change, it sounds like, yeah? Oh, I gotta get a full screen here. Jeez, always something.
You need a motion, Charlie?
I do. Thank you very much, James. Yes. Would you start that for us?
I'd love to make a motion to approve the settlement agreement as presented.
Did you second that?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Eric. Have we got Mike back? Hey!
Hey!
That's the point, not to vote on the budget.
What did I miss?
Everything. We're all done. No.
Okay, see you later.
All right.
Can you add a vote? For the budget?
Yeah. What?
Vote.
All right, so we're on 11/2. We have a motion and a second. Is it a roll call, or is it all in favor? I can't see it.
Do a, do a roll call.
A roll call, please, Jamie.
Alderman Levy.
Aye.
Ballberg.
Yes.
Fiore.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Hospodarsky.
Aye.
Very good.
So what I was saying, does Alderman Fiore want to register a vote on the budget? Can you do that, Howard?
I would just leave it clean as is.
Okay.
Okay.
You could voice an opinion, but let's just keep the vote as it was.
That's fine. It's good. It's all good.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So last thing on the agenda is discussion of Everts Park renovations. Chris, you good with this?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah?
Chris, maybe try turning off your video. That helps me.
Oh.
Yeah, that'll say bandwidth.
We got plenty of bandwidth. How about now?
That's good.
That's a lot better.
All right, fantastic. Okay. Steve Contras this year from Mitch Tech Design Group. He's over there, at least on my right. Hi, Steve, you want to unmute? And what we'd like to do tonight is just kind of go through some of the threshold. We're about to go from concept to bid. So I'm gonna share a screen with you, and we're gonna run through the site plan and just pick off the, kind of the three or four major parts of the park to make sure we're on the, on the right path. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about the actual parts of the park, including the equipment, concepts for ban shell and things like that. So I'm gonna share the site plan here. Okay, do you see that? Give it a minute. Okay, Steve, are you there?
Yep.
Great. What I'm gonna have Steve do is just kind of go through what I think are really, there's probably four major elements of the park, or maybe five. Up here in the corner is what I call the bistro. This is a seating area, and then we have our playground, our splash pad, and then our ban shell. And then probably the final area would be the large, the grounds. So Steve, maybe if you can go through and kind of hit the highlights on each one of those. What you're looking at is the landscape plan, so we can also hit some highlights on that as we go through. And then we'll chat about some of the actual pieces of equipment that we're contemplating at the moment. So Steve?
Thanks, Chris. And will you have the ability to zoom in, or should, or will we stay at this scale?
A little bit, a little bit. I am on a Chromebook, which is a horrifying piece of equipment. But I think I can definitely switch on the playground and the splash pad. The other elements, maybe not so much.
Okay. All right, no problem.
Sure.
But as, as the council might recall,
But as, as the council might recall too, from the master planning phase, even though that was quite a while ago. The, the main idea was to continue to preserve as much open, central open space as we can. So that the festival, just open recreation and your festivals. And, you know, in the lower right-hand corner is the band shell, which I'll talk a little bit more in a bit. But the intent was that that faces out to the open area. And then the pathway would be kind of a curvilinear route around the perimeter, again, to maintain that, that open space in the center. And to try to maximize areas for tents for your festivals, as well as provide what is more kind of a, a strolling walk for park participants to come through the park as well. And obviously, we know we've got a small footprint of a park. But we're trying to maximize that as really a recreational amenity for the only trail system for your residents. And so in the upper left-hand corner, similar to the location of the existing equipment. We've got the playground shown there. And we show three park elements, three equipment elements in them right now. Those elements are just placeholders to show you kind of the scale of the space. And so it shows like a swing set, a small two to five play area and like a five to 12 plus play area. But what we'll be doing is we'll be using this footprint along with some design input. About to a couple of key manufacturers, get detailed concepts from them for the city's selection. And this, the, the, this whole area is budgeted to be a ported place rubber style playground as opposed to a wood engineered fiber playground, which provides more accessibility and more ability to create some cool visual patterns and even create play space, play value within the patterning that you might do with the rubber surfacing. We're showing obviously that you've got some key access from the pathway to the playground, from the playground out to the lawn area. And then there's a picnic shelter right, just to the right of the playground. And so that is situated so that it can take advantage of both happy people sit in the shade while their kids are on the playground or people being able to sit there and look out on the lawn or even across to events that might be taking place at the band shell. Then just to the, on the opposite side of the path of the playground is the splash pad area. This was always meant to be kind of a, a, just a supplemental area and really kind of a minor splash pad. So it's going to be mostly ground jets. And, and, you know, because of the space constraints that we've got here, but really even a small amount of water is a huge value for kids. I mean, during the summer months, this is just going to be probably, you know, one of your most popular spaces, probably, you know, for kids within the community. Kind of see hugging the perimeter of the spray ground is a little bit of a solid gray hatch. That's meant to be the rain garden area as well as kind of a butterfly or butterfly and pollinator habitat. So while it'll be a serious types of plants to attract pollinators and butterflies, it'll also be the types of plants that allow some of that water runoff from the spray ground to collect in there and infiltrate into the ground as opposed to it all going directly into the storm sewer. So then as you move south of the playground along the pathway, you get to kind of a seating area. And that's just meant to be another kind of a little gathering space. So when events aren't going on, it provides some area where people can be social together or even still provide some individual space. I think one of the benefits here is that we are, you know, without necessarily having thoughts specifically about post-pandemic design, because it didn't exist, that, that as a, as a concern at the time this was done. One of the value I think you get out of what's already here is there is some, some specific spacing to some of the seating locations. Not just around the park, but even within those areas. But I think people will be able to accommodate some, some good distancing even with the way this is already laid out. But it's meant to be a garden space again for people to gather when there aren't events or even a nice seating area for people to overlook when there are events happening in the band shell. And then it's, you know, the pathway kind of curves around to the east. You get up to the band shell area. And so it is meant to be a fairly nice sized footprint. It's about as wide as your current band shell. It's a little narrower because it's more, more horizontal in its nature. You provide some room for a restroom facility and storage, and it's a future phase behind it. So in this phase, that area will be graded for drainage and to be accommodate a future building in that location at the time that you guys can go forward with that. And then as we kind of continue counterclockwise around up to the upper right. That's sort of the, what, you know, Chris had deemed the bistro area. And so again, this is meant to be when there aren't events going on, a nice gathering space that people can be at. Throw a laptop down. We will have infrastructure out here with lighting and Wi-Fi capabilities. So people can come out here and study, do work, you know, hang out and do other social things on, on their laptops or iPads. And then when there are events going on, this kind of becomes your dining area, especially because of the fact that you, if you continue to have food trucks along North Avenue, we, you know, that's was placed purposely to have a nice proximity for those events that take place with the food trucks for people to then come and sit down in that area. And then as Chris mentioned, the central space is really your, your fifth and, you know, primary recreational area. Not just again for passive open, passive recreation when events aren't taking place or people come and throw a frisbee or kick a ball or have their dog with them. But, you know, provide ample space for people to gather during your bigger events that you host. And, you know, you, we can sort of, it's hard to see at this scale with the hatch of the turf. But we are representing still kind of a pinwheel pattern of that catenary lighting. You know, may, we, we real, we recognize that that was really a key element of some of the character that you had to this park recently. And so we want to make sure we maintain that within the new development of the park as well. Of course, we'll connect to the existing south connection to the park. So you could kind of where the hatch runs out. That's where we run into the existing pathway. And so that landscaping and path will remain intact. At this time, we aren't doing anything out to the west in this phase.
Excellent. Steve, I'll just add a couple notes. He mentioned pollinator and native grasses and flowers. We do have a grant pending with Commonwealth Edison to hopefully pick up $10,000 of that cost. And my hope is that this, this rain garden pollinator, the way to drain this splash pad becomes a real showpiece for the City of Highwood and for other communities that are contemplating small splash, splash pad features that can kind of handle the, the water that coming off the pad and then we release to the storm sewer as kind of a last resort. So I'm really excited about that piece. And we will have educational signage as part of the ComEd grant throughout the park at various locations. For example, here, we would have something like how to build a rain garden. What kind of plants are there? How did, how to design it, how to construct it? And then as you move around the park, we would have other signage, how to attract butterflies and bees, et cetera, with, with different plants. How to use native species in these various planting beds. So that's kind of an extra element that's, that's been added to the, to the design since we originally looked at it a year or so ago. Really because of the ComEd, the ability to add another $10,000 or $15,000 to the project with no expense to the city.
Is that water treated at all so that it would have had an impact on the flowers, the vegetation that was there?
No, it's coming right out of the, right out of a city tap. So basically, this is a glorified sprinkler.
Okay.
You know, so there's no chlorination or anything like that, other than what we already do.
Thanks.
Excellent. So are any initial thoughts or, you know, this is really kind of what you've looked at a few times, but we're, we're getting down to, you know, some kind of specific design elements here and, and, you know, moving closer to bid documentation. So if there's anything that jumps out at you that's, that's not appropriate or that you'd like to see, now would be the time or over the next couple of weeks.
So first of all, I think I'm really pleased with how this plan's evolving. I think everybody's doing a terrific job. I had, I have to say, interviewing the planning alike, I had to do a little thinking through of the water feature on the splash pad. Just because I thought could be an avenue for a little more playground equipment, a little more open space, that kind of thing. Is it going to be hard to maintain? But I'm feeling comfortable with the direction around the water retention. My understanding and research of the splash pads, they, some of them are motion activated, for lack of a better word, or weight activated. So they're not running all the time. They're only running if people are playing on them. That's good. And I'm assuming that also we'd have the ability to turn it off if we thought we needed to for a big event in the park or something like that if we felt that was a.
I, I do have a, I do have a question on the band shell. Load in and load out for bands. How do they do that?
So right, right now, the, the pathway that kind of leads from the library parking lot, you know, will maintain that connection. And so people can come up and, and that band shell pad will be flush with the pathway in front of it. So they'll be able to roll their equipment right onto the, the band shell pad.
So they have to come with, they could roll into place, I suppose, because right now they park right, right up to the gazebo.
They pull it on the grass?
They pull up right now. It's not grass. It's, it's, it's concrete or asphalt.
You can see the, kind of the outline of the old gazebo here. I would imagine that they would, here's the existing pad coming off the library lot. So I would imagine they would come, basically do the same thing, Eric, come right up through here and, and load in here. I don't know. Do we get anything larger than a three or four-piece band out there?
Yeah, yeah, we had some pieces of larger three or four-piece band out there. How wide is that walkway? That would do it. If you could fit a car or truck through it.
Correct. And I wouldn't limit the size of that badge, that band shell, the one we had in Never Spark, the gazebo before was the gazebo. It was the size it was. So if based on what Alderman Volvers was talking about, like, we got to think about making it a little bigger to accommodate more, I think that should be kept.
How many, what's the size of that gazebo of that band shell?
So that band shell is approximately 22 foot in its depth and almost 42 foot in its width.
Oh, so it's huge.
It's wide. It's huge.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I guess my question is, I just, you have to think about people being able to bring their equipment in and how to do the timing and, you know, in and out. People have to be walking on that path. So the question is, how do we, how do they handle that? Because bands don't always show up on time, you know?
Most of their equipment's on rollers anyway.
No, most of people have to usually park right behind stages and, and are able to get there coming out. If it's heavy, it's just a thought. I mean, I'm just trying to be, just the small things I'm just thinking of.
No, I love that. Being in a band, and the older I get, the closer you can get to a stage, it's absolutely essential. That, that's a, that's a great thought. And, and Steve, maybe we look at, at doing something with this. Expanding this piece a little bit so we make sure we can be able to get some vehicles. I could see getting up here. And you could maybe park right in front of it and get your stuff out and then somehow get out of there.
What's the plan behind the stage? It seems like open, a lot of open land right there.
That's.
That's usable space right now that we use for the markets.
Well, this space here is contemplated for washroom facilities, which was really the number one thing that everyone asked for.
Yes.
So you'd have probably another, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably 10 foot by, I don't know if it goes the whole way across. And this is where we'd also put in some inside storage, you know, maybe a roll-up door. Where you could, you know, put some equipment in there or benches or chairs or things like that.
Right. And as part of this too, just a reminder, there's a couple of gaps in here and things that we did talk about. And we have that in the planned phase two, which we can talk about and try to apply for future grants with also. So this, it's certainly usable space for events currently, but an opportunity for a little more later.
Oh, yeah, you have, you do have some associations that don't want to be in a loud area. So it does become a much quieter space for people to be there. So it does work for quite a few vendors if, if, if you're looking at that side. The other question I have is about electric. And what's the consideration for electric around here?
Yeah, so. Go ahead, Chris.
No, you, you go, Steve.
Okay. So I know it's again difficult to see at this scale the plan. But there are, there are going to be both light fixtures that are around the pathway at key areas along with power bollards. And the power bollards will be at locations on both sides of the pathways. So that you can minimize or avoid entirely having to have any, any cords going across the pathway. So, yes, so Chris is zooming in for you to see, but there's, there's symbols that you'll see as soon as this is able to regenerate and, and over a little bit.
Okay, so I, just one thing I'd want to take into consideration when you're looking at the power grid. In some of the circuits, we, we need some of the circuits that can handle higher average and power. Because you do have people bringing cooking equipment in there.
Fires.
And then, you know, obviously, we, we want to eliminate the need of cords everywhere because that's an issue we run into now. Not just across the path, but always also.
Everywhere.
Running cords everywhere, having to go all the time around cords and power. But also along the grass. We obviously want to eliminate tripping hazards and the appearance of, of cords in many places.
Understood.
Right. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, we had power, I would loosely call them power stations at, at kind of these locations around the path. So you can avoid exactly that. There, there should never be a cable running across the pedestrian pathway.
Correct.
That's great. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And we did have the electrical engineer, they, they have been out there. One of their significant recommendations is to replace the whole panel that's down here that's, I believe, on a piece of plywood and, and really get things in ship shape. But the good news was the service coming in looks like it's, it's sized correctly. So we don't have to work with ComEd. We don't have to deal with that.
Yeah, there's definitely, there's definitely plenty of power there. It's the distribution of power that became an issue.
That's fantastic. That, that would, that would have six weeks.
Steve, could you just go back to the last, I think Jim had the question on how the splash pad works. I think when we talked before, there was something that someone, like a push button or something that someone would use to regulate. So, so all the primary vendors and manufacturers of spray pad equipment have systems that are, that are motion or push button activated. And within that, they also have controls that you can set and change. So you can modify when it's even available to be on. So you can choose that, so they can't come out at midnight and turn it on. So you can choose what hours of the day and what days, and you can change that. So like in your peak summer months, it can be more available. Maybe toward the end of the season, you can create it so it's less available. Or if you're having, if you're having to do more water conservation for a drought period, you can scale back on its availability. So both, you have the ability to control when it can be turned on and off. And then they need to use the motion activators or button activators. And then it'll sequence for, and again, you could set it. If they hit the activator, it might sequence for five minutes or 15 minutes, and then they got to hit the activator again.
Right. I, I have, I have personal experience with this. We had a splash pad about this size in Lake Barrington, and it had a button activator. And it was set for about every 12 minutes, and it would run for then about a minute and a half, maybe two. And I got to say, just watching the anticipation of the kids, because they kind of would start to sense when it was ready to go, was really part of the enjoyment of the whole splash pad experience as opposed to have it running constantly. That little bit of patience was great. So that'll be, I think, a key element here because we do want to keep the flows down. And it is a smaller pad. But we can talk a little bit about that when we get into some of the imaging of what we want to do there. So I don't, are there any, other than, I think, with the access issues for, for musicians and for activities, making sure we can get people in and out of here and making sure we get our electrical sized upright? Any, any other items? I mean, the one other thing I thought of was we've had a lot of discussion about public art. We have some nodes here, like here.
Yeah.
Here, and perhaps in here, that we can start to install some of that at, at the discretion of the council.
I like that idea. I saw that. I, I had two other things around the plan. One, and my guess is you're already aligning to it, relates, I love the butterfly garden and the pollinator, that kind of thing. But in terms of native plants and those types of things. Ford Sheridan has a very extensive town for Sheridan. OC Simons built, based on OC Simons landscape development plan. So it might be an opportunity to see if some of the native plants and things we're using might be aligned with what they developed in their plan. It's pretty significant.
Fantastic.
So it might be a good source.
Yeah.
It's seen there. The other thing too, and just stating the obvious, is I know there's even in the packet, it's very detailed. There's even in the packet, the types of tables and things that we might consider. So I guess the only other thought putting there is I'm sure now we're going to have to be thinking about social distancing and other things like that. So when we're starting to think about the benches, the tables, those types of things, we'll probably need to be more sensitive than we might have been.
Hope not to be dealing with social distancing. Hope not to be dealing with social distancing next summer, Jim.
I hope, I hope not too, but we,
I don't think I want to organize a park.
Well, I think, I think a better way to look at it is if we don't at least think about that, it doesn't mean we have to do it, but
Well, that's a matter of moving actual equipment, but
Oh, no, no, no. I'm, I'm just saying that let's just make sure it's something we consider and we don't have to design the park to keep people.
And we should start calling it safe socializing, cause, uh, social distancing just sounds so cold to me.
I don't want, I don't want plexiglass between people's seats.
One last thing to point out, which I thought we, we added just recently was the, these two little nodes here are for swing seats. So they're, they're swing benches, uh, not unlike a porch, a swing bench, which I thought were just a fantastic idea. You could swing and watch the band or have something to eat. Um, so we'll show those in a couple of seconds. So if there's any other thoughts on the site plan, we'll move on to some design concepts for the actual gear and equipment.
Okay.
All right. Here we go. Um, what you're gonna see here is really the start is kind of the playground area. And our, our thought here, um, is to, to do like a large climbing piece for the older kids, you know, six to 14 ish. And put that in that kind of northern part of the playground area. And then perhaps supplement that with a slide and really keep it as a kind of a singular piece. My hope here is to a little bit, do a little bit of future uh, thinking here. So we don't go with a giant apparatus that stretches over, you know, 30 yards and, and that if you've got to pull it out, it's super expensive. If we can put in a climbing piece like the one in the corner here or the one in the middle here, we can swap that out in five to 10 years and, and, and something that's more cost effective than kind of tearing apart the whole park. And plus the number one thing we heard from the kids at the cell, at the, um, evening markets was they want something tall. They want something that's a little dangerous, a little bit more active. So that's what we've kind of started to think about here. Uh, and Steve, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I mean, just the only other, the other, uh, thing we're trying to accomplish is we know that you've got a limited footprint because we're trying to maximize open space out there for other, other, other events and recreation. So the idea of a more compact footprint with height as opposed to like Chris was saying, something that's spread out. Um, to give the kids some excitement and some value in a smaller footprint.
So if you're looking at this picture here, you'll see it's, we, we kind of did it, older kids on top. And then we are going to have to have a tot type structure, which is what you see in the middle left there. Um, and there are thousands of these. Uh, this is just a, a singular example, but a little slide, a little climber. Um, and then it got kind of fun because we've got some space. And again, thinking about doing modular things where we can swap them out. Uh, Steve came up with their trampolining in public parks is becoming a thing. I'm a little concerned about the drainage and all the junk that fills in there, but it's a thought. Um, and then you get, you get, uh, spinners. And obviously we want to try to accommodate as many of our residents as we can in terms of, uh, disabilities and things like that. And we can put, uh, we can put spinners and different kinds of bucket spinners around, um, the grounds. Cause one of the things I learned during this process is for autistic children, uh, the, the spinning and the motion is something that, um, is very helpful to them. So I'd love to kind of just pop these in and out. And then five years out, you can say, all right, that's a little tired. Eh, take it out.
Can, can we put a carousel with a bar in the middle?
Well, you don't have, you don't have the, uh, 21 and older.
No, that's on the inside. The outside, the kids are on the horses.
That's after we buy Charlie's pedal, uh, bar or whatever that big is.
Yes, Nash one, baby.
And I hate to say it, but this is
That's probably.
This bottom left, this is what a seesaw looks like now. You can't really crush your fingers in it. You can't drop your friends and break their spines.
You can jump through it.
So these, these top two things are kind of the two major playground areas. And then, um, we, we've come to the conclusion that swings are kind of essential for the park. Swings are great. Everybody loves swings. Um, I, my particular, I love this simple one-piece structure. Um, it's super clean, less holes. Um, I kind of love that idea, but there's all sorts of options out there. And really all I want, uh, in terms of the council here is, is should we have swings there? Um, or should we not? And then we can, a few months down the road, we can kind of get into a little bit more detail on thousands of variations of this, uh, this stuff. It gets a little overwhelming to be perfectly honest.
I would imagine. I think swings are sound essential. I mean, that's what, I remember back when my little guys were kids, they loved those things. Especially as parents, you knew they were stuck in there too, which is kind of nice too.
I like this one with the dad just staring at his kid. That's, that's a crazy little.
That is crazy.
Yeah. Steve, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on swings or spinners or?
Yeah. I mean, the, the thing is too, we're trying to have again, pieces that are relatively small in footprint, but can accommodate, you know, a group of kids. And then, and swings just unfortunately just in, in their nature are space hogs because of the use zones that come with them for safety, safety purposes. And, but you like, as Chris mentioned, you know, they're always one of the most popular elements at any playground. So it's, it's, it's really difficult to, to try to choose to not do swings. So I think that between swings is the right thing here.
I think it's one of those things that if you didn't put up a couple of swings, that'd be the first thing people would notice.
Right.
Yes, I agree.
And, 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 you know, some of the issues we've had in the park in the past, we are trying to limit, um, areas that can be tagged or spray painted or vandalized as much as we can. And so when I look at a climber like up here in the center, you know, that, that's got very limited flat space. You can't do much with that. Um, so we're trying to keep the park clean, keep it classy, keep nice, um, with minimal amount of maintenance. That was, that was definitely a consideration as we, and we'll have cameras and stuff, but still we don't want to give anybody a pallet. So that's the playground. So if you have some time, take a look at that. If you can, you can Google, there are thousands of playground distributors and, and manufacturers. Um, if you see anything super crazy or super great, pass it along. Uh, but generally our concept is kind of a large climber. If we can integrate a slide, we will try that. Swings and then a tot lot and then individual pieces. Uh, jumping over to the splash pad. Um, our main goal here, and this is kind of what I expressed at the consultant is at least for the first year, we want to make sure it works. We want to make sure we can manage it. We do not want a lot of pieces of equipment in there. We want to make it simple and, uh, let's start there, but let's build in the capacity to add, uh, you know, uh, vertical structures of like a flower or something like that in the future. Um, and Bridget, who is on their staff there, this upper left corner one here, it has just kind of an art piece in the middle. And just simple splash. I think that is perfect to be blunt. I mean, that, that is, that is a fabulous looking little splash pad. It's got a little art piece. But it doesn't break the bank and it doesn't, uh, create a lot of maintenance issues. Any thoughts?
There were some interesting YouTube's, cause I went out to YouTube to see what some might look like to get a sense of it. Uh, some of the ones that were interesting were the ones where like cups would fill up with water and then tip over like you see in a water park, but they're real simple. They're just little tiny cups. And that was the anticipation, the cup filling up and then pouring out.
Hey, maybe we should ask, uh, Paul Brad and see what, if he wants to put the two sculptures there.
You know, I was gonna bring that up, but you beat me to it.
I was too. When we're talking about our pieces of art, am I, where, where you need them?
Yes, yes.
Question is where the water will come out of.
That's awesome. It's very European, very European.
That's right.
Literally. What about a bocce court? How about a bocce court?
Oh, there you go. Uh, we don't really have one planned at the time because we've got the, the whole other bocce thing in town. Um, so we don't have, we don't have a lot of lawn games. The lawn uh, for the, uh, the vendors and the, and the events. But that's what we're thinking on splash pad. And I, I don't, I don't really see, I think that'd be fantastic. Like today, 91 degrees. That little pad would be spectacular. All right. Moving the drill.
All right.
Um, uh, for the gazebo over by the park, over by the playground. I know Hiwood, you know, I know we love the, the stone pillars, um, but, but in talking with Steve, we'd really like to do something simple there that you can see through. You can see the band. You can see the, you can see your kids. Um, save a little cost. So this one right here, uh, we get a metal roof on it. We make it a nice dynamic color. Boom. It's prefab. I, I think we're out. I don't, I don't see a need for a, a couple or what, you know.
No, that's great.
What about those fabric ones I've seen before? No fabric? Is that too expensive also?
No, actually we, uh, we originally envisioned a fabric structure during the master planning. And then when we went for the grant during the application process and the review with the DNR, they had mentioned that they don't, they don't consider the fabric structures, um, a, a permanent structure. So it would not have gotten you a point. Um, so not to say that you may have not, you may have been able to get the grant without it that point anyways. But, you know, making sure, trying to maximize your opportunity to get the grant, we switched it because of the DNR's input to a, a, uh, more permanent roof structure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Hey Chris, how long do those, um, gazebos last?
Steve?
Oh, I mean, they've got, I want to, I want to say that most of the, uh, mainstream manufacturers are like, uh, 15 to 20 year warranties. And they'll probably last well beyond that if they have good maintenance and you're willing to, you know, um, paint the, if, if, if it's a metal structure, if you're willing to, you know, paint it from time to time, I'm sure you can lengthen the life of these well beyond 20 years.
Yeah. And we'll work a color scheme. So the, the gazebo, the park equipment, any artwork that's in the splash pad, even some of the landscaping, it's all going to be thematic. It's going to look just fantastic, I think. And that's the, that's the bonus with it, with a simple structure like this. You know, you, you virtually infinite color selection on a metal roof like that. And, uh, and it's, and it's a hell of a lot cheaper. Um, moving over to some bench ideas. Now these are real, I mean, there's a million benches. Um, we, we do have a lot of benches in the park that we can, that we're going to reuse. You can see that on the right hand side here. Um, I would say eight out of 10 are in good shape. Um, there's a few that aren't. Um, so we're going to incorporate those into the park. Um, but then we thought maybe we could pop a few kind of interesting bench structures here and there. And this is that swing we were talking about. Something similar to this, a swing bench. Uh, which just adds an active element and it would be super popular. And Steve, apparently that's kind of the bench de jour.
Yeah. And we've, yeah, we've seen that these are definitely growing in popularity. Um, especially when there's areas to view, what, you know, like, and so since you guys have like a festival ground and a band shell, we could see that these being tied, you know, some of the, the spots that people are gonna fight for when you have an event going on. But, uh, we see them a lot on, you know, lake fronts and, uh, beaches too, where people like to sit and view over the beach, beaches and lake fronts. So.
So now we're getting into a little bit of minutia here, but benches and, and things like that. Um, we want to do permanent connected pieces. We don't want any individual pieces out there that can walk away from the park. I like the game table kind of concept. Uh, but the, the, these are, you know, we don't need to spend a lot of time in this. But basically we were looking, uh, that would be the bistro area over in the top right corner of the park. So we'll, we'll go with something similar to these. And then, uh, very briefly, oh, not very briefly, uh, lighting, we are looking at relatively sophisticated lighting that includes wifi security cameras, ballards and controllable LED lighting. Um, if we're going to invest a million dollars in the park and the state of Illinois, et cetera. We want to be able to see what's going on and we want to be able to get some good lighting that we can control, uh, et cetera. Let's jump the band shell real quick. Now this is where I think that the, the Hiwood stone pillar uh, is much more appropriate and, and much more necessary. The band shell will be on the southern end of the park. This is where you have the entry with the existing masonry, which is fantastic. We would probably do exactly what we do with our gateway signs, uh, which, which mirror those things with the same type of stone. And, uh, so we're looking at something similar to, to one of these. I would guess kind of the one on the left here. Uh, these are bigger, I think, but Steve, any thoughts?
I think, uh, you know, we wanted to show a few different styles, but I think that, you know, we're, we're saying, we want to make sure we're kind of complimenting and matching materials throughout the park. So if we're talking about metal and wood, we'd like to kind of, uh, utilize both of that along with the stone column wraps here. All, you know, the two on the left are probably proportionally a little bit larger in height than really what you would have in, uh, in the scale of your space. Um, but it just represents again, the idea of what type of materials we think would, would work well at this, at this park. And we know we're not creating a, you know, a, a professional grade band shell, but acoustically, we think the ton and groove decking underneath um, could provide a little bit of a, you know, lessen sort of the, the issue with echoes and, and kind of soften, um, some of that, uh, from a sound standpoint as well.
Can, can we, uh, something I wanted to consider when we're looking at these band shells and, and other areas and light posts as well, uh, would be areas that we could, uh, post sponsorship type banners. Um, when we, the only way we could afford a lot of these events is through sponsorship. Um, we've had a difficult time. I mean, literally we're punching states into the ground and it really looks cheesy. Uh, we'd like some areas even on the posts, but almost banner style type ability that we can put sponsors up during the summer in the fall. Um, and also on the, on the stage as well. I, I want to take that into consideration.
And naming of the stage?
Like we use on the gateway signs on those on the, the brick portion and then do something else to hang from the top of the band shell for the
Yes.
That's a fantastic idea. Some sort of hook system, um, that's, that you could run. You know, you could run something along an edge here, a weighted vinyl banner. Um, you know, that you could give, you could give a sponsor, okay, it's gotta be 12 by four. We need a grommet every 12 inches. Um, and have it built into the structure. Uh, that'd be fantastic. I bet, that's great. And, and even events and
And then, and then the other thing would be maybe, you know, banner style, uh, stuff on the, on the posts where we can advertise future events, et cetera.
Yep.
We have, we haven't ruled out naming rights though for certain things, have we? This would stay
We have not, we have not. We actually have a policy ready to go and talk about, um, just, we haven't, um, we've had relatively short meetings and other things, but we do have that ready to go for an upcoming meeting.
Right. I would just say quickly, so I don't lose this thought in case at the next meeting, we don't have that. One of the things that was done that was good with an SSRA is they tied the naming rights to the useful life of the thing that was named. So that, let's say this is a 20 year structure. You get the naming rights for 20 years. When it has to be rebuilt, you can, your first, write a first or first of to rebuild it or somebody else gets it. So you use a, aim to plan in the future to make sure that there might be a way to, uh, rebuild things. They didn't permanently name something. It was for a set length of time.
Great idea. That's a great idea.
Is there, can I ask one question about the band shell? Is there, so, you know, Steve, I think you mentioned one thing that's, that's good to know, right? That's the, the acoustic uh, or potential acoustic differences with the different building materials that are used. What, it looks like the, the metal band shell option. And I realize this isn't an exhaustive list, but does that let, um, sunlight through? Is that transparent? It's hard to tell.
That image on the right side is, uh, yeah, so it was sort of like laser cut metal with a pattern. So that one does, does let. And now again, not that, um, we would have to go with something exactly like that, but if, if there's an interest in that, we can see if manufacturers can maybe, you know, provide that in a section of the roof. We certainly wouldn't want to be the entire roof.
Right.
For this kind of a circumstance.
Yeah, maybe to let some light through. I, I would defer to others that, that I guess could speak from the performer's perspective or whoever is usually going to be underneath the band shell. Whether that's good or bad, but it seems like a pretty significant difference between the two. Either, you know, you're, you're letting daylight through or you're not.
And then I'll throw out one other question. This might be same thing. People are in bands. Alvin Falberg has done this all the time. Is there, do we have to, should we be giving any consideration to sound and speakers? Or is that something we'll assume either bands will bring that or to cost?
I definitely, I definitely think we should look into something, uh, as far as basic setup for sound speakers and lights.
Lighting.
Uh, lighting is very important, um, especially because most Lighting is very important, especially because most of our events are at night.
Right.
And they lead into that. And it would also lower the cost of bringing in bands, because they wouldn't have to worry so much about the type of people they bring in. But it would have to be something standard that we'd be able to replace pretty easily, and we'd have to have a budget in for that.
Yeah, yeah. The weather issue, I wouldn't leave anything out there permanently. One thing that absolutely should happen, every band now is using powered speakers. Nobody uses a power amp that's tucked back here and runs to the speakers. So we would need, you're gonna need power in every location that you think you're gonna have a speaker, because you get it in, and it's got a Class D amp in it. So that, that would be, I think at the minimum, you want, you want outlets in these locations or down low, or wherever you're gonna do the.
I think, I think basically, when you're looking at bands, you want to have the basic speaker structure, where they bring their, all their own PAs and everything. But we would have, if you see the middle structure has speakers.
It does.
I, I would do something like that, so we have the ability to control the sound.
Well, sometimes we just need a mic, if we're having some event, we're just so many.
Sometimes, exactly, sometimes you just need a mic, we don't have to add someone to bring somebody in, somebody to easily plug in.
Right. So I think Steve, at a minimum, at a bare minimum, we want power up here. Because then you can do whatever you want, you can hang a speaker up here, and you can plug a microphone in back here, and.
Right.
It's all about the power.
And the surface is just concrete? Is that what the surface is intended to be? I can't recall the initial, okay.
Excellent. I think that we've got some great input here, and I think we can kind of keep this thing going downhill. My last comment, unless any other questions, is, I'm gonna stop. It is, we, we are gonna pursue a grant for the gas station property up at the corner of the, of the park. And that is on phase two, and that would be the entry to the park, so we think we have a good shot at that. So that'll be starting, that grant period starts June to July 31st. So who knows? 18 months out, you might have a gateway into that park, and just a real, a real jewel in the center. Exciting.
I think you're done, Chris, you, Donna, you broke up there at the end.
Yeah.
The computer said it's enough, Chris, you're done.
Chris, nice job, if you can hear me, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, thanks, Steve.
Any other questions for those two? Nope, still not working. All right, I'll assume he's done, okay. We have no action on that one, correct? What? What happened?
Put him out of his misery, mute that guy.
Well, that was our longest meeting this year for God's sake, okay. Scott, it's tomorrow, is it?
What?
Scott's tomorrow.
Scott's muted.
I don't know how he's still getting through.
Yep, this is my last day of quarantine, so hoping for a.
Yay.
Yay.
I like the beer though, Scott, you gotta keep.
Long way to go to catch Andy.
Well, yeah. Well, he can grow that in a day.
Right.
Wolf. All right. Well, you guys look healthy, stay that way, Jamie, you too.
True.
Not healthy, but thank you. What do we, don't lose, yeah, right? Well, we can see if you, Eric, is good.
Yeah.
No executive session, I guess motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, James. Hey, you moved inside while we were, what happened?
Yeah, it was, I was getting dark, so I didn't know if you could see me, so I moved into my son's room.
I like all those bobbleheads, very nice.
Yes, all the good Blackhawk stuff is in your room, James, it looks like.
Goodness, true.
All right, thank you, everybody. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? All right, be safe, everyone, have a good night.
You're welcome.